We have just returned from executive session. Let me get my computer back on. We have just convened from executive session where we met to, for the purpose of a discussion of student appeals, student admission requests, the district's adult education program, and contractual matter regarding the selection of construction management risk selections. And at this time, we will move on to item three of our agenda, inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to everyone. It's a blessing to be in the number one more time. We're going to have our inspirational moment by Mr. Jesse Williams. I'll have him come forward first, and then I'll share a little bit about Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams is an assistant principal at Pontiac Elementary School. Mr. Williams and I started our journey back over 20-some years ago, working as a teacher assistant back in Richland School District One. It was so exciting to see Mr. Williams become a part of Richland Two family, but become a part of the family as a school administrator. When I think about Mr. Williams, I think about his leadership ability. I think about him being a role model even back during his TA years. And also, I think about the ability that he had to work with all different types of students, his diversity with the students. But not only that, his ability to see every child as someone who's special, someone who's smart, someone that the parents send us their very best, and someone who gave 100% every single day to every single child. But what's most important, not only is he an assistant principal, some of you all may or may not know, he is also an associate pastor. So I like to say, although we have no control as to whether we can bring prayer back in school, but it sure is a blessing to me to know that we have a spiritual leader walking through our halls, covering our teachers, our community, our students, and the school building. So I present to you my friend over 20-plus years, who is a role model, a positive role model, someone who cares about all people and believes not only in himself, but believes in every person that he touched, Mr. Jesse Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson, for this invitation to share with you all tonight. And good evening to everyone. Much respect to Ms. Mackey and the other school board members, Dr. Davis, and the senior staff. Last night, two college football teams squared off in a championship game, trying to earn the title of being the national champion. Each team did not get there by accident. They got there because of their hard work, training, practicing, and conditioning. In other words, they went through processes in order to earn that spot, that at times were very time-consuming, extremely tough, caused them pain, and tried their patience, but required their full commitment. But in the end, it all paid off, and of course, only one team was able to win, right, Dr. Mr. Bryce? Both teams, however, earned their spot and right to be there. And sometimes, as educators, we find that educating students can be very time-consuming, extremely tough at times, and can cause us pain, and really can try our patience. But yet, we must stay committed to the process. And I think about my own personal journey. Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson, for telling a little bit about that, starting out as a teaching assistant, and then becoming a certified teacher, and going through the process to become an administrator. I could have given up in the process, because it would have saved me lots of money, and lots of pain, and time. But I stuck it out, and if I was not even more of a gluttony for more pain, I decided to go through the process again, working to earn my doctoral degree, hopefully in the fall of 2020. I'm committed to the process. And there's a scripture passage that supports being committed to the process, and it gives me courage and hope, and I hope it will help you as well. Dear brothers and sisters, when troubles of any kind come your way, consider it an opportunity for great joy; for you know that when your faith is tested, your endurance has a chance to grow. So let it grow; for when your endurance is fully developed, you will be perfect and complete, needing nothing. So as I end this inspirational moment, let me use R2's four squares to bring this point home, or, in other words, to tie a bowtie around it. The passage suggested that the process is not only for our students' development, it is for ours as well. In other words, the process is for us to learn something. Learning happens during the process. This passage also talks about building character. When your endurance, your commitment to the process, is fully developed, you will be perfect and complete. You can't really know the depth of your character until you see how you react under pressure. Yes, the process builds character. Joy was mentioned in the passage. Consider it an opportunity for great joy. I found a quote that summarizes this joy. It means that you are staying positive. Now, staying positive doesn't mean you have to be happy all the time. It means that even on hard days, you know that there are better ones coming. And the last square, community. Know that you, your commitment to the process will build a better community, one student at a time. So be encouraged tonight to stay committed to the process, the process of educating our students in whatever role you serve in. All of us are here, obviously, because we love our children, and we want them to excel. So I say, stay committed to, at times, a long, time-consuming, even painful process, but oh, so fulfilling, process of molding and shaping our students for success. Because in the end, that's how we earn our championship trophy, to be a district that is premier, period. Let us all stand for our pledge of allegiance.
We will have the ROTC from Ridgeview High School present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We reach item 4.1, approval of current agenda. If we can get a motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Oh, sorry. I make a motion that we approve the agenda for this January the 8th, 19, or 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll cast our votes with regard to the current agenda. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Next, we'll move on to item 5.1, and I think Mrs. Ruth is going to do a presentation for us to take a picture.
Yes.
And just as to what we're signing or pledging to represent the interests of the entire district in making decisions, and to rely on available facts on our judgment, rather than on individuals or special interest groups. To understand the proper role of the board to set policies governing the district, and to hire the chief administrative officer to carry out these policies. To encourage an open exchange of ideas by all board members during the decision-making process. To seek regular communications between the board and students, staff, and all segments of our community. To attend all board meetings. To study issues facing the board, and to enact policies and official actions only after a full discussion of such meetings. To work with other board members in a conscientious and courteous manner befitting the public, befitting the public trust placed in the position of school board trustees. To communicate concerns and public reaction to board policies and school programs with the superintendent and other board members in a professional manner. To support employment of the persons best qualified for staff positions, and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff. To avoid conflicts of interest, and to retain from using board position for personal or partisan gain. To encourage recognition of the achievements of students and staff, and of the involvement of community residents. To support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff. To take no individual action which would compromise integrity of the board, and to respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act. To study current educational issues. To participate in training programs such as those offered by the South Carolina School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association. And to make our district's educational setting the best possible, to encourage all students to achieve and to love learning.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. And for those in the audience, what we just, what Ms. Mackey just read, and the board member signed a little earlier tonight, are the principles that the School Boards Association sends to us in January, because you may not know, but January is School Board Appreciation Month. So we have school boards all across the state of South Carolina will be doing this at their meetings here in January. So if I could get you all to come up front for just a few minutes, right there, we're going to grab, give you the poster and get a photograph, because that's been the request from the School Boards Association.
Madam Chair, just prior to us going up, I would just like to repeat one of the principles that we're signing, and that's to take no individual action that would compromise the integrity of the board or the administration. Thank you.
And our photographer wearing his lovely clips and attire. Okay, thank you all very much, and I will take that back. Yes, thank you very much. I hope one of the other, one of the principles was recognition of our students and our staff and our community. And when I read that, I just smiled, because I'm like, we absolutely do that. And so we're going to have Dr. Elkins Johnson help us tonight with handing out certificates. And again, board, I always like to say, thank you for giving us this time. We have a packed room tonight, so that means we have some big awards to announce. Let's start first with a special gift to the district. So I'm going to ask Martha Jones to come forward, before we begin with our students and staff.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Davis, and the, and board members. It is my absolute pleasure to give you this news tonight. As you know, Service Solutions is our contractor for our custodial services in the district. And what they have done is made a commitment, as Mr. Williams said earlier, they have made a commitment to our students and to our district. And so I would like, at this time, to ask the Service Solutions team to come up. We have Val Emery here, he is the regional vice president, Jennifer Frizz, who is the regional director of operations, and Simeon Williams, who is the resident regional manager, and we have Yolanda Blackwell, who is in charge of all things important, right here in the school district. So we see Yolanda quite a bit around here. But these folks have, yeah, and we'll call everybody up in just a second to take a picture, but come on up, Dr. Davis. You are welcome. We have a couple of other folks, we want to be included in the picture as well. But as you can see, this giant check is for $25,000. And what this $25,000 will do, $5,000 of it will go to R2 Ready to Read, and the other $25,000, $20,000 is divided into 10 $2,000 scholarships for our stu, our graduating seniors. And the people, the employees of Service Solutions, if they have students, children that are graduating from the school district, they get a first shot at those scholarships. And, but it is open to the entire district, and we are so grateful for your commitment to us, to your commitment to our students, and for showing that in a very big way tonight. I'd also like to introduce Amy Kane, who is the president of Richland Two Education Foundation. And this money goes into the Education Foundation. The scholarships are facilitated by the Foundation, as well as R2 Ready to Read. So now, at this time, if we can get the rest of the board members to come out and around, and we will take a picture of everybody. But let's give, give Service Solutions a hand.
Thank you all for letting us make that special presentation. It's always nice to get a big check. Now, let's bring up the Blythewood High School students who are here. The theater department once again received top honors from the South Carolina Theater Association's High School One Act Play Festival, and we have many of those students here with us tonight. Their theater director is Sandra Deedle, and she'll come up. And we also have assistant principal David Cohen in here for principal Matt Sherman. Now, let's meet our talented actors and actresses. If you're here with us, when I call the name, please come forward. Isabella Butler, Lily Campbell, Kira Childs, Casey Dial, Jessie Elliott, Marissa Estebanes, Ellie Feuerstein, Anne Hyler, A.J. Jacobs, Matthew Kerr, Jenna Kaiser, Sophia Lynch, Sophie Peirich, Avery Robbins, Jacob Rubino, Jennifer Warner, Jerry Winhorn, and Audrey As they're getting their certificates, let me tell you about what they did. The students performed the one-act play Elephant's Graveyard before four judges, and were named state winners, which goes to two of the performing groups at the festival. That means, for the fourth time in five years, Blythewood High School has qualified to perform and compete at the Southeastern Theater Conference, the largest regional conference in the country. The students will perform and compete in Knoxville, Tennessee, in late February. There, they will be exposed to workshops, auditions, and professionals. In addition to being a state winner as part of the group, two cast members, Kira Childs, Kira, and Jerry Winhorn, received All-Star Awards for Excellence in Acting. Congratulations, and good luck in Knoxville. Congratulations. Next, we're going to honor some individuals who we might see play in the national championship game one day. We certainly hope so. Many of our football stars, players had great seasons, and our seniors received special, some of our seniors received special recognition. So we're going to start with the players who participated in the 2018 Shrine Bowl. Jalen Dunbar from Ridgeview, and if you'll come up, along with principal Dr. Brenda Mac Foxworth, and athletic director Brian Rosefeld, and coach Perry Parks, if you're here. In addition to Jalen, Jalen Geiger and Anthony Wilson from Spring Valley competed in the Shrine Bowl, and if their principal Jeff Timoney, athletic director Tim Hunter, and coach Robin Bacon will come forward. And then we have Cameron Smith from Westwood, who could not be with us tonight, because he's getting a jump on his college career, and is already getting ready to go to USC. But Dr. Cheryl Guy is here representing him, she's a very proud principal. So the annual game features top high school players from North and South Carolina, and it's played to benefit the Greenville Shriners Hospital for Children, and 20 other Shriner hospitals for children across the nation. It was played on December 15th in Spartanburg, and it was a nail-biter that ended in a tie, right, Guy? A 10-to-10 tie. But that's okay, because everybody wins them. So we want to say congratulations to our players. Jalen Geiger, who is the number-two cornerback in South Carolina, will join the Kentucky Wildcats. Anthony Wilson, who was named Mr. Richland County Football Player of the Year, heads to Georgia Southern. Of course, Cam Smith is at USC, and Jalen Dunbar has made a verbal commitment to Hutchinson Community College in Kansas. We look forward to seeing you all play on Saturdays. Congratulations. Dr. Mac Foxworth, will you come kind of up to the front, too, there? Make it a little balanced and out of everybody's way. Mr. Timoney and coach Bacon, y'all want to stay up here? Because you also had two football standouts who were invited to play in the 2018 North-South All-Star Game, joining other elite players from around the state. Please come forward, Achille Pauling and Max Shropshire from Spring Valley, Spring Valley High School. This game was also held on December 15th, this one at Coastal Carolina. Max, who plays defensive tackle, and Achille, a cornerback, played on the North team. They came up, their team came up a little short, but it was close, 13 to 10. Proceeds from this game are turned into the scholarship for the children of the state's athletic coaches. Congratulations on your outstanding football success in Richland Two. I know both of you have offers to play college football, so good luck with your decisions, and good luck with your education. Thank you so much. Now, for our last one, I have a big group to call up. And I was going to attempt to call every name, but I ran into subpoenaship issues. So I'm going to ask principal Janine Tucker from Round Top Elementary, assistant principal Clarissa Bennett, assistant, and assistant principal Brandon Shermer to come up. And along with them, I think we have a whole host of Round Top Elementary employees, and we'll bring you all up as well, because this is a big recognition, and we want to get everybody a chance to shine. Don't worry, we won't take the photograph in here. We will, after we share your great news, we'll go outside and take the photograph on the steps, which will be much easier to coordinate. So let me tell you, as you all may remember, last spring, we brought a big group from Round Top. Again, they always pack the house when they come, I will say that. They, our school made the Leader in Me Lighthouse School. Since that time, you know, that wasn't good enough for Round Top. They had to go above and beyond, and since that time, they have gone on to become a Leader in Me Lighthouse School of Academic Distinction, which is the next level in the lighthouse school framework. The designation comes after the International Leadership Program analyzed the school's academic data, as well as state accountability standards for the past several years, and found evidence of continued academic progress and growth. Leader in Me is a whole-school transformation model and process that empowers students with leadership and life skills they need to thrive in the 21st century. Of the 4,000 schools that have adopted Leader in Me, only 300 have achieved the lighthouse certification. Congratulations, Round Top Elementary, for always, always, the great job that you do in putting students first. Thank you. All right, we will exit out, and I will, we'll get that big group photograph out there, and then that concludes the recognitions for the night. Thank you all very much.
I think it's the longest part of our meeting, a special recognition, recognizing those who've accomplished and worked hard for our district, and that's a good part, that's a goodly part of the meeting. So we appreciate everything that everyone does to contribute to the success of our students in Richland Two. I'll wait just half a second while everyone, while everyone files out. The mass exodus after recognitions. At this time, we'll move on in our agenda to item seven, approval of our consent agenda, if we could get a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda with an amendment to page three of Professional Releases Number Five. Change teacher assignment from teacher, sixth-grade resource, to teacher, ninth-grade resource.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll cast our votes at this time. And moving right along to item eight, school focus, 8.1 school focus, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have before us this evening North Springs Elementary Principal, Mr. Rashad Adams, who will share highlights of the first part of the school year through the lenses of character, learning, community, and joy. Mr. Adams.
Good evening and Happy New Year. As, as Dr. Davis already stated, my name is Rashad Adams, and I have the pleasure of serving in my first year of principalship, and every day is new. That's, that's what I'll say about it. Yeah, I always smile. I am delighted to spotlight all of the wonderful and meaningful learning experiences in my school community. This year, we have learned that inclusion is more than recognizing our differences. It's about embracing our diversity and building upon it. It is allowing each person to bring their whole self to our school. I'm so proud of our narrators. Each day, each one has a story. These are students and adults who exemplify the importance of diversity and inclusion in our school community, which obviously makes us better.
Welcome to North Springs Elementary. We are many crickets, many connections, in one community. We are excited to show you some highlights of the first part of our year through the lenses of character, learning, community, and joy.
One of the first things our new administrative team began planning was our character focus for the year. Falcone and staff collaborated to develop our cricket traits. Each week, a new cricket trait is introduced and discussed on the news show. Teachers use picture books and other forms of media in their circle time to highlight the use of traits in their classroom throughout the week. Our students put the cricket traits into their everyday lives in many ways. Our third and fifth graders led a school-wide service learning project partnering with Spring Valley to collect canned goods and professional clothing for new teachers. Adult mentors meet with kings and gems to further develop the cricket traits in our students. Our fifth grade, A-Team, uses the cricket trait of kindness by working with our preschoolers during related arts.
We know that students find best in an enriched environment, which includes daily agendas, making connections, the what and so what of learning areas for circle time, and student collaboration. Learning happens through a variety of instructional strategies such as simulations, IRR code, STEM infused instruction, blended learning, and project-based learning. Our faculty and staff continues to learn through the professional learning communities and our affiliation with the University of South Carolina. Our staff recently participated in diversity and inclusion training with the purpose of designing culturally relevant learning experience like our immigration simulation. This opportunity gave students a chance to compare and contrast immigration in the past to present day. Students were able to identify reasons for migration, empathize with immigrants traveling to America, and understand cultural exchanges and how they make us better.
We understand the importance of a healthy relationship with our parents and community.
Our community partnerships continue to strengthen teaching and learning at North Springs. One example of this is our partnership with Beth Ruffin, who led the diversity and inclusion training. We also joined the Richland, Too, community in hosting On the Table, which brought business partners together with parent partners and allow us to build personal connection and work together to make our community stronger. Our PTO recently reinstituted our Home Room Parent Program. This allows parents to partner with the school to impact student achievement. Parents are always present to help with activities such as the Book Fair, Boostathon, Cricket Fest. With the help of our PTO, we kicked off our Watch Dogs program with Donuts for Dad, Grandparents Luncheon, and STEM Night.
Our motto for the year is be present and be pleasant. Schools have always been a beacon in our community, a place where joy is found in learning and is the norm. At North Springs, we strive to bring joy to one another, to our students, our teachers, and to all who enter our building. This begins with making meaningful connections and getting to know one another.
Thank you for visiting North Springs Elementary. I hope we see you soon. Bye.
And I couldn't have said it any better than Ethan. He's just an awesome kid. So just thank you for the opportunity to highlight our wonderful cricket community. We just look forward to continuing our pathway to premier, and we hope that you will come by and visit us anytime that you'd like. Are there any questions? Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Awesome. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Mr. Adams, I apologize. Are any of your students present with you this evening?
We do actually have one student present. We have Shelby Hinson, a fifth grader.
If you stand.
And those are her parents here with her. Shelby is very charismatic, so we felt that she would be a great fit for our, for our video.
Thank you so much for being here, and I appreciate that. Be present and be pleasant. I appreciate that, and from our visits to North Springs, I can say that is absolutely the case. Thank you so much for sharing with us. Moving right along to item 9.1, public participation. We limit each person who comes to the, to the podium to three minutes, and ask that you refrain from using specific students' names or schools' names. And we are thankful for the people who take the time to come here and to share your concerns. Tonight, we have one person signed up. If there are any others, you can bring me the forms, but there's only one person. Rhonda Meisner, if you come forward.
So, good evening, board. Thank you for taking time out of your schedule to, to try to take care of our kids. I am here, and I am a broken record. I keep saying the same things and keep requesting the same thing, and I am hopeful. Tonight, we heard about the athletics, we heard about the arts. I'm hoping that we get around to education in taking care of our gifted and talented students. Why do I think that they need to have choice for the gifted and talented students, and why now? Well, right now, it's choice and extended choice. And there are a couple of exceptions to choice. Spring Valley, Blythewood High School, from the high school standpoint. But why choice for the identified gifted students? Because this is a real, real issue in our district. Most notable is the superintendent. Based solely on his position with Richland, too, he sends his children, I believe, to Blythewood High School instead of his own Ridgeview High School. There's a reason for that. People need to be able to choose when they have gifted kids where their kids go to school, in my opinion. Why choice for gifted kids? Because those are the kids that are basically being used by our district to help with the schools at risk. I'll give the example of TLC at Dent. If we peel back the Band-Aid off the wound and stop using the stopgap measures, then those schools that are using magnets and so forth are, are forced to, to actually teach the kids there. Who are the gifted community? They represent all racial, ethnic, socioeconomic groups. There are students that meet the 96 percentile and have a composite score in grades three through 12, and they have mandatory testing. Why is it important to the district? It's important because the district gets money for the gifted and talented students, both from the state level and from the federal level. And June 30th, the funds are distributed. We have students that are leaving the district because they don't feel like that they have a choice. The other thing is that these students are, have high expectations of themselves and others. As a result, they're, they're somewhat in a disability, which may not be recognized as, as such. Because the student is aware that they're different, they're sensitive to the problems of, that they may feel isolated from other students. They have a low self-conscious about being different, so sometimes they have a low self-esteem. What that means is their potential peer groups are small, because they identify mainly with adults and other highly gifted kids. That makes it more pronounced going from middle school to high school. Attention is paid to testing, but you're not providing the emotional and social part for these kids. Highly gifted refers to aptitude rather than performance. You can have somebody that makes all As, however...
Ms. Meisner, if I'm letting you finish your statement or whatever sentence you're on, but we limit comments to three minutes, so we ask if you just wrap up whatever statement you're making right now.
Okay.
And if there are comments you want to add to the, you want to give to the board, feel free to share your comments with us, or if you want to get direction from staff or have questions to ask, feel free to do so.
I'm happy to do that. However, I do think that, that when other groups and students are given 10, 15 minutes, that we should be able to address you for longer than three minutes. But that's okay.
No, no, no one ever has. Let me address that. No one ever has. I think we had a board meeting, a couple, a couple of board meetings ago where we had someone who had some, some issues who finished her statement, but, you know, but typically we stick to three minutes. But I'm letting you finish your thought. Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
So anyway, I wish that you would do an exit study for the middle schoolers that are leaving the district, find out why they're leaving, and do an exits, and do a study of what they are there. I do have one other issue. If my three minutes are up, I'd like to sign up as another person.
We can't. One person, one person, three minutes. But do, but do share whatever your concerns with us. Please just, just share them with us in writing. Just share them with, just, just share them with us in writing. Share them with us in writing.
So, so one other question. Are we going to have another public session tonight?
There is another one. There is a second one.
Okay. Then I'll, then I'll sign up for that. Thank you.
No, thank you. Next, we'll go on to item 10.1 Legislative Update. Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just by way of an update, we just started this week. The General Assembly came back into session, and so of course, we'll keep our eye out for the bills that have been prefiled. What has come to my attention is school climate. There's been a study committee on that, and of course, teacher pay as well. And I would just encourage folks to talk to their legislators and make sure that they keep education as a priority. It appears that that's what they're looking at. And so we'll just make sure that we stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. I think it's just being called the, the year of the education, session of education. We'll hope that's what, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Shad. Any questions or comments regarding Mr. Shad's report? If not, we'll move on to item 11.1 Student Appeals.
Madam Chair.
I will serve a motion at this time. Yes, Mr. Manning.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that student number one, we deny the appeal. Student number two, we deny the appeal. Student number three, deny the appeal. Student number four will pull for now. Student number five, deny the appeal. Student number six, return to homeschool on strict probation with services. And student number seven, deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll wait for Mrs. Sherman to, to get that motion in writing, and you can verify it, Mr. Manning, when it pops on the screen. Thank you. We see, have the motion.
Yes, ma'am. I'm looking at it now. No, that's correct.
Okay. If we'll cast our votes at this time. Thank you, Mr. Manning. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
For student number four, I'd like to make the motion to deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of two to five, the motion fails. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Dr. Holmes.
I'd like to make a motion that student four, we retain at Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the year with also additional services provided.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion at this time? If not, we'll cast our votes. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Can we also get a motion regarding item 11.2, student admission requests into the district's adult education program?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend that we accept the district's recommendation for student admission requests into the district's adult education program.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins-Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to item 12, old business action requested. If we could receive a motion for each item individually or collectively, however the person who makes the motion chooses to proceed.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I make a motion that we approve policy revision EBCE, or EBC rather, emergencies as recommended by the district.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Is there a motion with regard to item 12.2?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move that we approve policy revision ECA security.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
I second the motion to improve our students' safety and security through this policy revision.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll cast our votes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Item 12.3? We'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve policy revision EBCE, school closings and cancellations.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Moving on, item 12.4, approval of policy revision ECAC vandalism.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation. We approve policy revision ECAC vandalism.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Item 12.5 Approval of Calendar for the Upcoming School Year. If we could entertain a motion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve the calendar for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to item 13 New Business, No Action Requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we're bringing before you this evening the following policy revisions and proposals. Policy EA, Support Services Goals and Priorities and Objectives. Proposals for Policy Revisions to EB Environmental and Safety Programs. Policy Revisions and Proposals for EBBA Prevention of Disease Infections and Transmissions. This is a new policy, as well as I apologize, the Policy Environmental and Safety Program is also new. And a proposal for Policy Revisions to EGAD Copyright Compliance. Dr. Frank... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Anderson, I apologize.
You guys did so good on the first four, I thought maybe I'll just let y'all just roll with it. Policy EA, the change involves recommendation from the School Board Association and district recommendations. So, we've added operations, more representation of what we do now, and as well as some of the other things in our operations. Any questions that I can answer for policy revision EA? Okay. You need to just keep going, Ms. Mackey. Okay. Policy EB Environmental and Safety Program, which is new. This is basically the policies regarding, is making sure we're all safe on the school property. The school board recommendations and minor district modifications to that policy. Any questions I can answer for that policy? Policy EBBA Prevention of Disease Infection and Transmission. This is kind of a combination of not just operations, but Don McAdams has looked over this policy as well. It's regarding district responsibility to controlling the spread of disease and actions to be taken, which we've always had a plan, but now we actually have a policy regarding that. I'm happy, or someone else can help answer any questions if you have any. All right. Thank you. And the last is Policy EGAD Copyright Compliance. Once again, collaborative effort with Nancy Gregory and her department reviewing this policy as well. But this policy is ensuring all employees follow the proper guidelines when copying and using materials. And these are recommendations from the district and from the School Board Association. Any questions on that policy? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Moving on to item 14 Agenda Items for Next Meeting, the January 22nd Board Meeting. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, for the January 22nd, 2018 Future Agenda Items, we have, of course, a Board Appreciation Dinner. I believe we will start at 4:00 PM. We will adjourn to also executive session. We'll have selection of construction management at risk firms, contractual matters regarding our charter school. We'll have student appeals, adult aid requests, legislative update, the approval of policy revisions EA, EB, EBBA, and EGAD. Also, we'll propose the following policies EC, ECB, ED, EFE, and EF. We'll have the approval for bond authorization, a report on the budget timeline, a report on charter school, the charter school annual report, and a report from Sandlapper regarding the computer science initial stages, information regarding a computer science magnet.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there any requests for agenda items for the next board meeting or for a future board meeting? Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request that we go back and revisit policy BEDB Board Agenda. And I would like to request...
Say it again.
BEDB Board Agenda. And I'd like to request that we have that at the next meeting. I know sometimes as board members, we make requests for agenda items, and they go by the wayside. They never show up on the agenda. And that's why I want to revisit this policy, because according to the policy, it allows the board chair to make the decision on what goes on the board agenda. And since we all are elective officials and we represent the constituents, I feel like that should be an even playing field. So, I would like for us to go back to revisit policy BEDB Board Agenda, so we can respect our constituents, because after all, they elected all of us, not just the board chair. Thank you.
Are there any other requests for items to be considered for the next board meeting or future? Dr. Holmes.
Yes, I'd like to go back and readdress the cultural competency piece. I'd like to know the specific train-to-trainer model students and teachers that participated in those particular workshops.
Dr. Holmes, could you be more specific? You want to know the specific names of the teachers who participated in the model?
Yes, I'd like to know the specific names and the teachers that participated in the model. I'd like to visit their classrooms.
Is that... You want us to present that in a board meeting, or you just want that information?
I think that that probably should be presented in the board meeting, so that there's a concern about cultural competency in the district.
Should we... You want us to run down the list of names?
Well, just if you can make a presentation as to where they stand on cultural competency, that specific training that we discussed in the earlier board meeting of the train-to-trainer model. I would like to know who participated in that and how many teachers have been trained up under that.
And give you an update, a report or update on the cultural relevant pedagogy training?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. We'll move on to our... Are there any other recommendations?
Madam Chair.
At this time, Mr. Manning.
At some future meeting, it doesn't have to be the next meeting. Maybe we could have a report on gifted and talented opportunities at our high schools, and sort of what that scope is, what it looks like, what those opportunities are for our students at our high school levels.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Excuse me, Mr. Manning. Can I get clarification on opportunities at the high school? That a talented opportunity?
Gifted, what's offered for students that are identified as gifted and talented across our high schools? So, what are those?
Excluding all students, or specifically what's offered for GT students?
GT.
I think I know. I think we've had in the past, I know, kind of a roundup of what's offered at the schools. Is that what you're asking for? I think.
Yeah, I mean, just to round up a sort of what opportunity... What is at our high school for gifted and talented specifically for our students that are gifted and talented? I know that's a little wide, so if you... That's all right. Get some ideas and bring them to me, and I mean, if that's okay, to help narrow it down. I mean, I... You can bounce things.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? If not, moving on to item 15.2 Public Participation Number Two. Rhonda Meisner signed up. And let me just, for clarification, I know we ask for people to be limited to three minutes, but I don't want to ever cut anybody off. And so, I usually let people finish their thought. And I know a couple, few board meetings ago, we had some, a person who went on for a while who had some special concerns. And so, I granted her a courtesy, and I did everybody at that board meeting, this wasn't fair. But we do try to keep it at three minutes. But I never want to cut anybody off in the middle of their thought. And that's why it might go a little bit longer, but feel free. Feel free.
I have officially earned the title of controversial speaker. I am here to...
Oh. I am here to turn on the mic. Thank you.
You're good.
I'm here, Ms. McKee, because one of the things that you guys signed... Y'all haven't started the timer, so I can't see it.
You're fine.
Okay. Last time, I didn't notice it had started. In any event, one of the things that you guys had signed in your ethics was that to maintain the integrity. The first definition of integrity is, as we all know it. The second one is to not put the group or separate the group. And unfortunately, Ms. McKee, by not filing your Statement of Economic Interest, Section 8131110 says no official may take office without a Statement of Economic Interest being filed. So, for multiple student appeals, for one of which included an appeal by my children, I would respectfully ask that you resign the board effective before the last school board, because you've basically kept others that were in compliance and able to take the oath of office from being a board member. And I think that as a person, you're a very nice person. You're very sweet. But unfortunately, you've put a lot of the community at risk, in my opinion, because as it says, you're not supposed to take your seat without filing those statements of economic interest. While you may think that it's, you know, just a simple misfiling, it really is not. The law says that you can't take your seat. And unfortunately, someone lost that was authorized to take the oath of office. So, I would respectfully ask that you resign retroactive before the last election, and whoever the next person with the votes do that. Only you can do that, you know, unless there are other means. But I would respectfully ask that you do that. And for the rest of you, there are others of you on the board that are in the same situation. I would ask that you look at your situation and resign, because you're not doing the children of this state a service. And I would like to say, thank you, Mr. Manning. Thank you, Ms. Agostini, and the others, Dr. Caution Parker, that have filled out your forms and... Thank you. I'm sorry, I haven't got there yet. But anyway, but thank you. But that's a hard thing for me to say up here, because I like you as a person. But I think that you should resign retroactive before the last election. So, again, I earned the title tonight, controversial speaker. But thank you.
We can't address any concerns that are brought before us publicly, but feel free to follow up with anyone that you need to follow up with. I'd be happy to follow up with you with regard to your concerns. And moving on to item 16.1 Board and Superintendent Comments, we'll start on our right with Dr. Holmes.
I would just like to say, I hope that everyone have a very prosperous holiday and a Happy New Year. I'm excited about starting this present school year with you all. And we've got a lot of things that are going on, and we're really excited about that. We don't need to let side things distract us, because after all, we are here for the business of educating children and making sure that they get the best education possible. And that's what I'm here for. And again, I'm happy to be here this year with you, and have a good evening.
Mr. Manning.
Yeah, welcome back, everybody. And Mr. Price, I voted for the calendar despite your outfit this evening, with the Clemson colors. So, I respect our state team, though. They did a great job in winning. Even though I'm a gamecock, I can still respect it, a great win. So, other than that, welcome back. Look forward to this new year.
Dr. Caution Parker.
Want to say Happy New Year to everyone. Glad to see everyone back. I'm sure you're really excited to be back. I also want to say congratulations to all the wonderful recognitions this evening. We had a lot. And that is just a true testament to the good work that we do here in Richland School District, too. And I also want to thank North Springs Elementary, Mr. Rashad. And I believe he's already gone. Okay. But congratulations to him for, you know, his first year as a school principal. An exciting time. Thank you.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I'd like to say, welcome back to everyone and to all the folks that received awards tonight. Congratulations to you. Want to say thank you to Jesse Williams, who left already. Just to say thank you, because again, as I stated, he started as a teacher assistant, and now he's an assistant principal, so it just shows that he's a lifelong learner. So, and also to all of our educators, thank you. And to SEED, I want to say thank you guys for the hard work that you do and for creating the legislators to go out and pay teachers what they really deserve. So, thank you to everyone who's here tonight, and we'll see you at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My integrity and my character are very important to me. And with that in mind, I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify a statement printed in the December 20th issue of The Voice of Blythewood in Fairfield County, titled Richland II Board Fails Ethics 101. And the initial article printed was, quote, "Board Member Lindsay Agostini's last report on file was a final report dated March 24th, 2017, leading some to believe I had failed to file my annual Statement of Economic Interest or not complied with the campaign disclosure reporting schedule. I appreciate the clarification in The Voice's article dated January 3rd stating, 'Besides Manning,' quote, 'besides Manning, Agostini was the only other current board member to file all her campaign disclosures and SEI forms on time,' unquote. A premier district deserves a premier board,' period."
Mr. Shad.
Welcome back, everyone. Y'all have a good night.
Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, again, Happy New Year to all of you, to all of our teachers, faculty, and staff, and our administrators. Welcome back to the second half or second leg of the school year. Not all, we're quite, not quite there yet, but in the next week or so, we'll be entering into the second semester of the school year. Right before winter break started, I had an opportunity to attend the winter holiday programs at our high schools. At these events, I witnessed, along with many of our board members, the longstanding tradition in Richland II that during the giving season, we bless others with our blessings. Under the leadership of our high school students, the Richland II family provided presents for 124 foster children and 144 families. We donated over 147 pints of blood, donated $22,000 to the Make-A-Wish Foundation, collected more than 100,000 non-perishable food items, 2,500 toiletry items, and 40 hand-knitted hats and scarves for shelters, 75 food baskets, 685 pairs of socks, and 322 pairs of shoes, 400 pet supplies for Companion Animal Hospital, $2,000 for the Palmetto Animal Assistant Life Services, 17 boxes of teaching supplies for teachers in another school district, 966 books, 250 book bags or backpacks filled with school supplies, 650 toys for Palmetto's Children's Hospital, and 57 bicycles. I want to express my deepest appreciation to everyone who supported these giving campaigns. The beginning of the new year provides an opportune time to revisit our promises and our pledges that we made at the beginning of the year. So, tonight, I want to reaffirm my Richland II promise. I promise to be resolute in my pursuit of premier. I promise to be relentless, unyielding, and unapologetic in my efforts to demonstrate consistent excellence in the practice of our core values, learning, character, community, and joy, the application of our principal practices, and the accomplishments of our universal goals, which is culture and environment, talent, and achievement. I promise to be present and fully engaged. I promise to be supportive. I promise to hold myself accountable before I hold others accountable. And I promise to demonstrate honesty and integrity through my actions and not my words. And I add an additional promise. I promise to champion this district each and every day, and that means standing firm and standing tall and standing strong, regardless of any distractions or any groups or individuals who look to undermine the progress of moving from, moving down the pathway to premier. I will champion and stand up for our teachers. I will champion and stand up for every student, regardless of race, religion, creed, or color, ethnicity, ability level, lack of ability level. It does not matter. I will stand up for every classified employee, and I'll stand firm for this community to ensure that we collectively, collectively, are held accountable and move forward to making this a premier district. Thank you.
I could strike the first few sentences of what I wanted to share tonight. It was, welcome back. It's 2019, and I'm thankful for another year that I'm here to work with my colleagues.
with my colleagues, the amazing leadership we experienced with Dr. Davis, our superintendent, our executive staff, who not only worked to fulfill their job descriptions, but who tirelessly troubleshoot a great deal of the time to help parents, families and students, our teachers, who give so selflessly of themselves on a daily basis, and students, who are the end user of the product that is gift wrapped and packaged so beautifully for their consumption every day, education. I'm thankful for the overwhelming passage of the bond resolution that has made it possible to do so much more and so much more quickly for every school and subsequently every student in this district. Those who are opposed to the benefits continue to make their disdain known, and I respect that, both professionally, publicly and personally, but to those who are working hard for the teachers, community and students of this district, I say thank you, bless you and stay the course regardless of the slings or arrows that may come your way. As I reflect on some of the deaths that I've, that I've heard about in our community and family over the holidays, I'm reminded, as Dr. Elkins Johnson said earlier, of an old Southern hymn, "Glad to be in the number," one more time physically. Approximately four years ago, I was hospitalized for nearly a month, and prognosis, my prognosis to live was bleak, so much so that my mother, also a teacher, took a leave of absence from her life to come and help me fight for mine and to support my family. But for God, four surgeries and extended stay in double ICU, something I didn't know existed at the time, I'm here and still advocating for what's important. Every day since that time, I've been reminded just how fragile life is and the ripple effects of holding dear to life, loved ones, passions for one's community, and the emotional and physical toll it takes on one's life, but the important things, community and keeping our eyes on the prize, the biggest of which is our district, and staying focused on the needs of the many and the myriad specialized needs of the few. We have so much to be thankful for, for the Richland Two family, who are watching via internet, and those community members who will never engage at this level, but who trust us to take care of the students of this district, bless you and thank you. As an aside, the country is suffering the effects of a government shutdown, and I'd like to say and am most thankful that it is business as usual for Richland District Two and its needs, concerns and priorities of the children we are here educating, bless you all for your role in that.
Can we, item 19, receive a motion to adjourn? Is there a second, Mr. Shad? Any discussion? If not, those in favor, say aye. Okay, consider ourselves adjourned.